Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, Kettering City Council. Today's date is November the 9th, and as always, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin tonight's meeting, we'll pause for a brief invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of these responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Next, we'll move on. First, my communication TV operator in the back, Mike Soprani. Mike, thank you as always. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, October 26, 2021, council meeting and workshop minutes. Mr. Lauder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from both the council meeting and the workshop held on October 26. I find both in order and therefore move for their approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes. Next, we had a presentation scheduled for this evening, a Fire Department Citizens Award. A gentleman was not able to make it to the meeting tonight, so we will reschedule that for a later meeting. Next, we'll move on to public hearings, which we have none, so public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak for council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wants to speak? Please, name and address.
Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Todd Elsie. I live at 3779 Waterbury Drive here in Kettering. Many of you may know me as a journalist in the town, but today I come to you as a resident who happens to be legally blind, and I have a hearing law. I am speaking to you tonight on item 10 of the agenda, a proposed ordinance to permit shared mobility devices such as e-scooters and e-bikes in the city of Kettering. I am also the elected treasurer of the National Federation of the Blind of Ohio. I ask that this council reject this ordinance as written because of some serious safety concern for city residents who are blind and have other disabilities. The National Federation of the Blind of Ohio passed a resolution on these types of devices in 2019, and I provided that resolution to city manager Swiderman and Mayor Patterson and each member of the council via email earlier today. We have four concerns with this proposal as it is. First of all, Kettering has some pretty narrow sidewalks and spots, and these devices, particularly when you put racks in various locations, often obstruct the path of travel. And not only are they troublesome for blind pedestrians, but they are also often troublesome for pedestrians in wheelchairs and other mobility assistive devices. In addition, I noticed that the ordinance permits these racks to be put on private property, often private property owners, as it is with tables and chairs and signage, et cetera, often obstruct the ADA path of travels for disabled patrons as it is. And we've seen in the past where these devices further encroach on that path of travel. An additional concern, particularly with the resolution and the ordinance's proposal to permit dockless devices, is that these things get left all over the place, on sidewalks. Particularly on sidewalks is a problem because they're just laying and nobody has any warning that they're coming upon them. That is particularly troublesome for a person with a disability who might have to either maneuver around them or try to get them moved out of their way. Another concern is that the resolution, the ordinance does call for companies to put information on the scooters about how to report complaint, but we have found that none of these companies put that information on scooters in a format that a blind or visually impaired person can access. In addition, most of these companies call for complaints to be filed by either mobile apps or website apps, and those apps are almost 100% across the board inaccessible to blind persons using screen reader software. So it becomes a situation where not only can a blind person not figure out whose scooter this is in their way and to complain about it, but they can't even file the complaint because of inaccessible processes. This is a particular concern with this ordinance because, under the ordinance provision, scooters can start to be used at 8:00 a.m., and the owners of the scooter don't have to move scooters that are left in the wrong places until 9:00 p.m. That leaves a potential for these things to be out and in the way of disabled pedestrian for up to 13 hours. So that's a major concern. Then, our biggest concern is with the safety of these devices. They are particularly quiet because most of them are electric. This takes away from a blind or a hearing impaired pedestrian the ability to protect their own safety because you can't hear them coming. I know the ordinance calls for people riding these scooters to call out when they're going to pass somebody. People routinely do not do that. They either don't read the instructions on it, or they simply forget when they're riding the scooter. That results in them going whizzing by a person with a disability and scaring the person. And in my case, having a hearing law, that single call out of somebody getting ready to pass you on one of these things is virtually useless because with, as me, with many people with a hearing law, they can't tell the direction that these things are coming from by a single call out. So for these reasons, I ask you to reject this ordinance as it stands right now and to consider rewriting this so that there are greater ADA protection for pedestrians with disabilities. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other comments on legislation on tonight's agenda? Oh, sorry, Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could, I'll just respond a little bit to some of the comments, and thank you, Mr. Elsie, for your comments. We'll be happy to meet with Mr. Elsie and to expand upon his email that he sent earlier today so that we can make sure that we can address some of those issues either by the interpretation of the ordinance that we already have or by what possible changes might be necessary. And keep in mind during this process that this first reading tonight, if we end up making material changes to the ordinance because of Mr. Elsie's comments or other comments we received, we could bring the agenda item back again in first reading with those changes. If some of the changes are not reaching that level of materiality but still need changes to be made, we could make those changes and bring those forward in the second reading coming forward, which we're scheduled for at the next council meeting. But we'll certainly get with Mr. Elsie to review the comments and see if we can make improvements or explain the ordinance in more detail. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we'll go ahead and, whoops, excuse me. We'll move on to ordinances in second reading. Mr. Klepass, Vice Mayor Klepass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance tonight in its second reading to amend the text of various sections of the City of Kettering Comprehensive Plan. It's requested by Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have an ordinance in second reading that will amend the professional office and research land use category in the Kettering Comprehensive Land Use Plan to include professional office and research facilities with mixed-use support retail and high-density residential uses, which will allow a broader mix of uses in the business park zoning districts and encourage future economic development. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Who'd you call? No, somebody asked, somebody make a second, yeah.
I did make a second.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Plan marked this time. Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Being non-call or roll, please.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance in second reading to amend the text of various sections of the City of Kettering zoning code. This is being requested by our Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance will amend various sections within our Kettering zoning code. The primary purpose of this request is to expand the type of uses that are conditionally permitted in a business park zoning district. This will add residential, multi-unit, 13-plus units, and restaurants as conditionally permitted uses in the business park district. It will also add special conditions for development of multi-unit residents and restaurants. Also, the text amendments will make corrections to previous errors that have been identified when we converted the I Industrial District to the Business Park Business District in several sections of the code. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Being non-call or roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes. Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Duke.
Mrs. Fisher. Yes, I have a resolution. Yes, I have a resolution accepting the findings and recommendations of the fact finding in SERB case number 2020-MED-121405 and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Kettering Association of Dispatchers, consistent with those findings and recommendations or as modified by the mutual agreement of the parties. It is requested by the Human Resources Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize me to accept the fact finding report. We recently received a fact finding report from the Fact Finder in our fact finding meeting with the Association, Kettering Association of Dispatchers. The fact finding report essentially mirrors previously agreed upon collective bargaining union agreements with other entities or other units of our organization. The wage increase would be a, the union, the term of the agreement would be three years. The wage increase would be 2.5, 2.5, and 2 and 1/4% for that three-year period. There were other minor items in the fact finding report that we also agreed to accept. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Being non-call or roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the school, with the Board of Education of the Kettering City School District for school district resource officers. This is requested by the Police Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a continuation of our partnership and collaborative efforts with the Kettering School District. The agreement will allow us to extend the school resource officers agreements that we have with the Kettering School District. This agreement essentially has the school district pay 70% and the city pays 30% of three officers' salaries and benefits for the upcoming school year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Being non-call or roll, please.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the Montgomery County Public Defender Commission and the Montgomery County Public Defender Office to provide mandated legal counsel to injure persons appearing in the Kettering Municipal Court. The estimated cost is $50,000. It is included in the 2022 budget requested by the Law Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is required by law to provide legal counsel to injure persons charged with the violation of a city ordinance for which the penalty or any possible adjudication includes the potential loss of liberty. We provide these services through this contract with the Public Defender's Office. The estimated cost is $50,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Being non-call or roll, please.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution accepting the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement with Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated. This is being recommended by our Law Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Pascalone.
Yes, this resolution will accept the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement with Janssen Pharmaceuticals and authorize execution of documents necessary to effectuate the settlement. The settlement was negotiated by the Ohio Attorney General's Office pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding regarding the pursuit and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds and, consistent with the material terms of the July 21, 2021, proposed National Opioid Distributor Settlement Agreement, available at nationalopioidsettlement.com. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Being non-call or roll, please.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract for services with the Kettering Basketball Officials Association. Estimated cost is $47,430, and the amount in the budget for '22 is $47,500. And it is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to enter an agreement with the Kettering Basketball Officials Association. This will be for the 2022 basketball season. The budgeted amount is based upon the league registrations that occurred in 2021 to predict the 2022 expense season, or season expenses. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Being non-call or roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to purchase fitness equipment for the Kettering Recreation Complex and the Kettering Fitness and Wellness Center. Estimated cost is $99,869. Funds available, $100,000 requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution, along with a supplemental later in your agenda, will allow us to begin the purchasing process for $100,000 worth of fitness equipment for both our Fitness and Wellness Center at the Trent as well as the Kettering Recreation Complex. I had requested that the department move this item up into 2021 so that we could get the process started rather than waiting for the 2022 budget authorization. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Being non-call or roll, please.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021. The estimated cost of these net transfers is $272,000. The amount budgeted is zero. It's requested by the Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a 2021 supplemental appropriation. The first item is $172,000, which is the necessary appropriation to enact the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Kettering Lodge Number 92, essentially our patrol officers. The total of 172,000 is $144,700 for the general fund police department cost center, as well as $27,300 for the police pension fund. We also have a supplemental of $100,000 for the purchase of the fitness equipment mentioned in the previous resolution. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Being non-call or roll, please.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes. Moving on to ordinances in first reading.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance in first reading to amend Chapter 478 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Kettering regarding shared mobility devices. This is being recommended by our Law Department, and again, this is a first reading.
Oh, Ms. Pascalone, sorry.
This ordinance will amend Chapter 478 of the Kettering Codified Ordinances regarding shared mobility devices. The language of the current Chapter 478 of the Kettering Codified Ordinances establishes a moratorium on the use of shared mobility devices within the city. The new ordinance establishes a framework of regulations to allow shared mobility device programs to operate within the City of Kettering. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Pascalone? Being none? Whoop, never mind. First reading, moving on to certifications and petitions. Ms. Kozinski.
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. City manager report community update. Mr. Swiderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for you this evening. The first, just reminding everyone that Medicare open enrollment began in mid-October and will run through December the 7th. As has been the case for the last several years, Vicky Care, her at our Kettering Connection, can assist residents with this process. They can schedule an appointment by calling the connection at 296-3330. Our leaf pickup is currently underway, and we are in our second pass through the city. We're currently in District 7. We encourage residents to rake their leaves to the curb. They do not have to be in the street, just adjacent to the street, and just rake leaves. If you have debris and other brush, please don't include it in those piles. That is dangerous for both our equipment and our employees. And our yard debris center on Woodman Center Drive is still open for that type of material. You can get an update on the location of the leaf pickup program by going to 296-2472.
She's got my house today.
Just a, an image, if you will, a picture of our Delco Park Veterans Plaza, and a reminder that Thursday is Veterans Day, and wishing thanks to all of our veterans who have served. For the Thanksgiving holiday, city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 25th, and Friday, November 26th. Refuge and recycling will be closed and not happen on Thursday, but it will happen on Friday. So Friday will be Thursday's collection day, and Saturday will be Friday's collection day for the holiday week. And then, just a reminder, and I'm sure this might get mentioned later in council committee reports, so I will just say Small Business Saturday is coming up on Saturday, November 27. Your Honor, that's all I have for you for the community update. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Swiderman? Next, moving on to audience participation point in program. If you'd like to come speak for council, please come on down to the podium. We do have a five-minute limit. Being none, we'll move on to city council reports and update. Vice Mayor Klepass.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple things tonight. Last Friday, the 5th of November, my wife and I attended the Donors Annual Appreciation Event at the We Care Arts on Wilmington Pike. And one of the things that they mentioned was the collaboration with the city, and specifically Amy Shrimp was mentioned, in helping them get provided with some Wilmington Pike Economic Development Funds that the city had made available, and they made a major improvement in the looks of that facility on, on, sorry, I don't have the mic on, Wilmington Pike. And then, last Saturday, all of us on council attended the, what has become an annual event minus COVID year, Dancing with the Stars, put on for the benefit of the Kettering Police Foundation. I think maybe a few other comments might be made, but congratulations to Lester Spinks, one of our, Kettering's finest police officers, for winning. But our own Shawna Kozinski was a great dancer, and we really, really thought she did, did well, and really appreciate it, see her. But the highlights, and we've all been wondering, what will the mayor do, what will Mayor Patterson do after January 1st, when he is no longer mayor? And he was one of the judges, so be watching for him on ABC next year, Dancing with the Stars. He'll be one of the judges. So we'll see what happens on that. And of course, Chief Frostman was one of the judges too, but I don't, we don't want you to be leaving to go to ABC. Last but not least, November 27, Small Business Day, support, support your local businesses. Thank you, manager. That's all I have.
I was wondering what I was going to be doing now. I know. Mr. Lauder.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Klepass mentioned the Dancing with the Stars. Again, I would say congratulations to the winner, but boy, there's a lot of us who felt that lady down in the middle of this table was the best dancer. Also, some of you may be wondering about those 1,700 American flags you're seeing all over the city. That's a project of the Doorwood Optimus Club, and we would be glad to put one in your yard. Just contact any member of Doorwood Optimus Club.
Ms. Fisher.
Awesome. I'll highlight my one event is the Fall Fun Fest that happened at Trent Arena. Lots of folks came together to meet parents, welcome the kids. We had resource officers there, Kettering Backpack Program. We're testing the kids on their vegetables to see what they were doing. There was yoga going on, there was meditation, a lot of resources under that venue, and it was a great time by all. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple things. First of all, congratulations to election winners. We have two of them with us tonight in the audience, our future mayor Peggy Laner and Lisa Duval, and congratulations to you, and Mrs. Fisher, who was reelected. Congratulations, along with Jill Hall from our community. So that's great. We have new folks coming aboard. What can we say? Dancing with the Stars was fun. I think we all agree that our best dancer was here on the, on the dais, but that's the way it goes, but she was terrific. Just terrific. We, I think all of us on council on Saturday attended an event. It was a memorial and a celebration for someone who passed away due to COVID a while back. But I do want to mention it, Pam Cochran. And anyone watching this or reading minutes in the future, I'm sure Pam touched your life in many ways. And a number of us had an opportunity to make comments. I spoke about Pam's work with the Kettering Leadership Academy. I know Mrs. Fisher spoke about the Backpack Program, which she was in the first class that did that, and Mayor Patterson made tremendous comments about, about her. Let me just say that we, we were blessed to have someone like Pam Cochran in this community. I believe she managed the Town and Country Shopping Center, but that was just her base. And, and she literally touched the lives of probably every citizen in this community with her service in such a broad range of community activities. So I just wanted to raise that up. Always think about Pam and her husband Gary, but think, when you, when you want to do something good for your community, take a look at a role model like her that did so many things, and I just wanted to share that with our audience. My only other comment is, don't forget your masks, folks. Keep them on, wear them. Let's knock this thing out so we can have a great spring and summer. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Just first thing is, immediately following your watching of our council meeting, they will be playing on, on your channel, on your TV, the evening, Dancing with the Stars. So you've heard us all talk about it and everything, so this will be an opportunity where stay tuned for a little bit longer, and you'll be able to watch what we saw in a great performance on, on Saturday night. So first, much like, much like Ms. Fisher, had the opportunity to attend the Family Fun Fest at Trent Arena. It was good to watch the kids run around and do the different things, and the library was there with their mascot, and we got... was there with their mascot, and we got pictures of the mascot. So it was a good time. Scott Inske, Superintendent of Schools, was there along with a number of school board people, and also thanks for the invite, inviting us to that event. Also, I'd like to hit on the election cycle that just finished. First, Peggy Laner, who will be selected as mayor. A second, to Jackie for your reelection, to the At-Large seat along with Jill Hall at the At-Large, and also to Lisa Duval for District Number 1. Also, to Bob Scott, who will fill in for Joe Wanamaker in District Number 2. Third, talked about Pam Cochran's celebration of life, and her husband Gary had invited us to speak, and, excuse me. And there were a lot of things that everybody talked about, but the big thing that came out of that, Pam Cochran, while Skilken and those folks owned the center, Pam Cochran was always the face of Town and Country. And she was great to work with. Every time you asked her to do something, she said yes. She was involved with Holiday at Home and a number of things here in town, including the, your program, Bruce, with Leadership Academy. So it was a great celebration. A lot of family and friends were there, so we appreciate, or I appreciate, being asked to speak from Gary. So we miss Pam. She was, her and Gary were on the Holiday at Home, the grand marshals. So she was missed, and we will continue to miss her spirit and her volunteerism in the city of Kettering. So we talked about Dancing with the Stars, and LaShawna, you absolutely were a winner, and we appreciate that. All the participants did a wonderful job. It was fun to watch all of them and their various styles and all that they did and raising money. I think, Chief, you could correct me, it was somewhere over $20,000 or so that they raised for the Kettering Police Foundation. So it was a great night. It was fun watching all the dancers. All of them did an incredible job. And we've talked about that a lot tonight, but we haven't told you the number of hours that these dancers, city folks put in with professional dancers in honing and fine tuning their dance routines. So they put a lot of effort in there, they did it with professional dancers, and thanks to Arthur Murray for their work in that, in working with all of our employees and in some cases, residents that were involved. So thank you for that. And with that, I hope everybody, well, we'll be here before Thanksgiving, so we'll wish you a happy Thanksgiving then. But our next regularly scheduled meeting is November 23rd, and with that, we stand adjourned.